All right, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, February 8th, 2017. They have a motion to move into executive session.
I move the board enter into executive session for the purpose of personnel, collective bargaining or legal, property acquisition issues, and student issues under Maryland Local Government Code Article Section 9-512A, numbers 1, 2, 6, and 10.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? See everyone in an hour. All right, I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, February 8th, 2017, and we will begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item, I have a motion to approve the agenda.
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Rita, you're first. Roma is in school.
That's good.
With her, at the start of the third marking period.
Well, I did quite a few things these past two weeks, but last night I went to King's Christians' girls and boys basketball game, and they obliterated the other team. It was, it was a great game, but regardless, you know, it was fun to see all the kids out there and having a good time. But we were, we were treated to a great halftime show, and it was Spring Ridge Middle School's rhythm club. So it gave them a great opportunity to get out and show their stuff. They also played some, you know, things during the girls' basketball game, you know, like on the sidelines, you know, like the, you know, I guess like the bands would normally do or something. But it was a lot of fun. They had a great time. I went over and talked to them and saw them, and, you know, I mean, the crowd went wild because a lot of the parents and the students from King's Christian had never seen them. And now they're all asking Mr. Harris, who is the vice principal there, can we do this? So, you know, like I said, it was a lot of fun, great opportunity for the kids, you know, to, to not only perform, but the other students to get to see them perform, so.
I attended about a week and a half ago, a motivational speaker named Chris Heron at Lunderton High School. It was attended by, I would guess, four or 500 people. Auditorium was about three quarters filled. Two my colleagues also were there, so I won't step on what they're going to say. The motivation speaker was Mr. Heron, who was a basketball player for the New, for the Boston Celtics. He got hooked on drugs and opioids, and it was a very sad, very poignant, very sad presentation of what, what the opioids can do to, to a person's life. So I'll let Ms. Bailey.
Thank you. Yeah, I too attended. It was, it was, he was, he was very open and honest about the way that it affected his family and various milestones in his life that he had missed because of his, because of his drug and alcohol addiction. And he spoke a lot about how it started as well. He did also do presentations at each of the three high schools that Tuesday night and then the following Wednesday. The talk with the students was a little bit different than what he provided to the parents, and there were a lot of people there who did also struggle with addiction that, you know, spoke during the, you know, the, I won't say question and answer, but it kind of was a question and answer session at the end. But it was, and I thank the county government and the Sheriff's Department and the school system for, for putting that on for everyone. It, it was very well attended, and, and I know that from, from the teachers that I know that were in the high schools, it was very, also very well received by the students and from the feedback that the teachers received from the students. So thank you to everyone for doing that. On a little bit of a lighter note, Margaret Brent had their winter gala, their frozen gala on Friday night. I was selling candy, and thank you very much to T-Bone and Heather, who were our guest DJs for that event. Mr. Smith did make an appearance and did help me schlepped some candy out to get all the kids all sugared up before we sent them home. You know, once again, I continually stress this, the amount of work that the PTAs and the PTSAs and the, the teachers and the staff members do in the school. I mean, we started decorating at 2:30 in the afternoon, finished up, I had to leave at 5:00, and, you know, then the dance wasn't over until 9:00, and then we still, you know, stayed to put everything away. And, and so there is a lot of dedication among the teachers and staff at all of the schools, not just at Margaret Brent, in order to make sure that those children have a fun evening.
A lasting memory.
Right, exactly. And I have to give a little props to Ms. Hart, who is the one and only decorating committee. Each year she outdoes herself with what her decorations are for the gymnasium, and it is incredibly thorough and it is incredibly organized. So thank you to everyone. And then just one last thing, as I'm sure everyone's aware, Nolan Scully passed away this weekend. There were a lot of programs within our schools fundraising, you know, there was a lot of t-shirts sold, a lot of different fundraisers for him and that family, and our thoughts and prayers are just out with them. Thank you.
I attended many events, and the board agreed that we would talk about one event, so I'll talk about one event. And the event I attended was the Chris Heron speaking engagement, and it was called Rebound, The Chris Heron Story. He was a former NBA player, highly successful, he was even successful in high school. At 17 years old, there was even a book written about him. He was the star in his county, people loved him and they loved going to his game. He was the guy that had everything. Chris paid for the Bolton Celtics, and he was a drug addict at a young age. He went from drug addiction to recovery, and that's the good news. He spoke about how you can fall into this pattern, but you can redeem yourself and you can come out of it like he did. He turned a negative into a positive, and he goes around the nation talking about the dangers of drug use and abuse and your recovery. He makes over 250 speaking engagements a year, so he is totally committed to it. He is brutally honest about his descent into drug addiction. He talked about how he heard his mother crying at night, herself to sleep because of what Chris was doing, and that hurt him very badly. He talked at all three high schools, and all the students attended the speaking engagement. I went to see him at Chopticon High School, and I saw him at the community talk. The community talk was a little different from the talk that he had with the students, so all people in St. Mary's County were invited to attend, and the auditorium was packed. At Chopticon High School, you could hear a pen drop. The students were totally engaged in what he was saying, and I was very pleased with that. It's hard to imagine, 1,800 students in a gymnasium, and you can hear a pen drop. He was that profound in his speaking. All sessions were followed by a Q and A. And what he wants us to know, that good kids can make mistakes. It's not the low-income kids, it's not kids who are not performing well, it's students who are performing well, students in the honor society, good kids who make mistakes. So he want them to know that they need to think before they make destructive decisions, they need to choose their friends carefully, and if they fall into this pattern, they need to tell someone and get the help that they need. I want to thank the Sheriff's Department, St. Mary's County Public School, the Department of Agent and Human Services for putting this program on. It's a tough, tough topic to deal with, but we have to deal with the truth, because it is here, it is out there, and it is taking the lives of our students. Nationally, young adults ages 18 to 25 are the biggest abusers of prescription opiate pain relievers, ADHD stimulants, and anti-anxiety drugs. In 2014, more than 1,700 young adults died from prescription drug overdoses. And locally, 59% of middle and high school students have used alcohol in the last 30 days, with 20% before age 13. And usually, they get it from the home, they get it from the medicine cabinet and the bar that parents have at home. And 32% claim to be currently using drugs and alcohol. So we do have a problem, we are facing the problem, and the county is doing everything it can to educate the students and the public about the risks that are involved. Chris lost everything. He had a wonderful career, he was successful, and it all went down the drain because of poor choices he made and people he were associating with that told him, just try this one pill, and with that one pill, he was hooked. So I appreciate him coming to talk to our students and turning that into a positive so that he can educate students. He's right in front of them, he's not hiding it, hiding it, and he can tell them, you can lose all your dreams by that one mistake. So it was a very good presentation, and we doing everything we can, and we'll continue to do things to educate our students and our parents. It is not an inner-city problem, it is a rural suburban problem. Thank you very much.
I've had a very quiet couple of weeks after the last board meeting. The kind folks at Mowgli Street shared their illness that was going through, and, and, and so I elected to stay home so as not to spread it any further. I'd like it to end with me.
To re-infect, thank you.
So, thanks, kind folks. Oh, well, the rest was good.
Obviously, the Chris Heron, and I will say that Ms. Kunkaria, who is diligently doing work at school, and she keeps on sending us emails saying, I'm so sorry, I'm not attending, but school is first, academics are first, she wrote one of the most comprehensive and heartfelt emails to me, and I shared with all of you following the event and the conversations that she had had. It really was, I think it was a really fantastic opportunity for us to, to address a problem. Other addresses that we provided, I did get to go to the Board of Public Works, and that's why we originally had to reschedule last week's, two weeks ago, meeting. I was joined by Dr. Walker and Ms. Howe and Ms. Mary Hayden, and we talked about our fully funded capital improvement projects for Park Hall Elementary School and Hollywood Elementary School. And evidently, we were so compelling in our conversation that Comptroller Francho actually came down to St. Mary's County to visit Hollywood Elementary School last week. I was joined by Mrs. Weaver and, and Mrs. Washington, and it was, we walked through the building, Comptroller Francho spoke very highly of the way St. Mary's County goes about capital improvement and sustaining the buildings that we have and making sure that we consistently improve all of our facilities so that not one facility stands above another. It was a, it was, it was a very positive visit, and I hope that he brings back to Annapolis that St. Mary's County spends the dollars provided well. Also, last week, we had a professional development day, and just an incredible day where everybody came out and we really took a look at all of the work that was going on, professionally engaged, all of our members, not only in classified but also non-classified. We talked about opportunities with staff for furthering their degrees and looking for other positions, promotional opportunities within the school system. We also had a speaker come out, Ms. Christine Anderson, and she's a survivor from the Virginia Tech shooting in 2007, and she gave a really compelling recount of that day. And then, more importantly, she was speaking to counselors and our security staff and members from the Sheriff's Department, Tim Cameron was also there with staff, talking about how best to manage a situation after that, how to really work with the victims, the people who might have been exposed to it, and their parents in larger community. It was really, again, it was a, it was a very emotionally draining presentation, but a great conversation to have and really important one to have. I did get out to see some classroom visits. Abby Vanderwiss down at Spring Ridge Middle School with her orchestra getting ready for all the spring concerts. Oh my God, those kids were so good. Did get to go to Chopticon yesterday. I, I apologize, I fed the children donuts, it was not a healthy choice, but that was a great way to get them to come out to talk about how things are going as we get ready for, specifically, we were talking with them about the program of studies, which is up for approval today, which then starts the whole process of considering where they're going to go next year, what courses they're going to be taking, and ultimately their long-term goals for post-secondary success, whether it be to go to a four-year college, a two-year college, a, some kind of a vocational program, or to go directly into the service. So we had a great conversation at Chopticon yesterday on that. This week is National School Counseling Week, and specifically is the thank you to all of our counselors working with students every single day. There's a hashtag floating around, hashtag NSCW17, National Counselor, National School Counseling Week. So to all of our counselors working with all of our kids, thank you. Thank you today and every single day. That work, especially at the high school level, is going to really engage for preparing for the next year, and the middle school the same way, looking at the classes that they're in, making sure that they're in the appropriate next classes, and at the elementary, taking a look at all of the transition activities. February is African History, African American History Month. We have activities happening all throughout our county. I know that Mrs. Washington didn't speak to it today, but perhaps at the next board meeting, going out and reading directly to our kids. We are gathering that all together, and at our final board meeting in February, we'll bring all that back to you. In fact, what I'm asking for is a really great example of something specific, and see if we can get somebody up here to present to us, a child to present. So we're really looking forward to that. It's a busy couple of weeks, it's going to be a busy couple of weeks going forward. I look forward to the board joining, and we're going to go up to a legislative session tomorrow up in Annapolis to talk about all of the bills that are being introduced and how best we can advocate for our students in St. Mary's County public schools. Thank you.
Okay. All right, and with that, we will have the public hearing. So I'll read my statement.
You read the statement while I pull up the.
As you get your slides together. Okay, this is the public hearing on the superintendent's recommended budget. There will be another one this evening at 6:00 in the same room. We heard back from several people, some people can make the morning, some people can make the afternoon, so, or the evening, so that way it's fair to anyone who wants to comment. But you can still send us an email up until the time when we vote on it, on the 22nd. So it's boe@smcps.org. Okay, "The board welcomes public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. We take this time to listen and consider, but not to comment. This is not the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns about individual staff members that cannot be resolved, please direct to the superintendent. We will not permit comments criticizing individual staff or students since this is outside the scope of public comment." It's a public hearing, so we don't really have the adult body thing. Speakers must sign in at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker, and speakers may not yield their time to someone else. The board encourages speakers to present written statements to the board secretary, who will distribute copies to all board members. Your own. Thank you.
And with that, at the, after the conclusion of our last work session, we did provide some information, and the request was made that we give a little bit of a summary before we walk into the session, and we'll repeat this again this afternoon, this evening. A one-slide overview of a $210 million budget, really focusing on what the changes are. This particular budget funds the negotiated salary step for all ESMIC-certificated staff. It funds the negotiated salary step for all ESMIC non-certificated staff. It funds the negotiated salary step for SAMA. It includes two additional school psychologists. It includes 11 additional para educators for primary classrooms. It includes 14 additional classroom teachers. It includes one additional ESOL teacher. It includes four additional Chesapeake Public Charter School FTEs, specifically a kindergarten teacher, a kindergarten para, a second-grade teacher, and a Spanish teacher. It includes one additional teacher support, IRT. It includes one additional teacher and para for the Compass program. It includes one bus, one additional bus driver and bus attendant. It includes two additional building service workers, one build-to-service worker floater, two safety and security staff, and one computer technician. It includes one additional HVAC mechanic and one additional HVAC helper. It includes a .5 fiscal specialist. All said and told, 45.5 positions. Conversation that was brought forth last time was about class size and the fact that we present an average class size, which is derived by taking all of the children enrolled at elementary school and dividing by elementary teachers, all of the students enrolled in middle school dividing by middle school teachers, and all of the students enrolled in high school and dividing by high school teachers. It really isn't necessarily the most reflective number. One of the questions that was asked was, where do we stand as far as classes above cap and/or above 30 at the secondary level? Just to remind everybody, the cap for kindergarten and first and second grade is 22 students per classroom, the cap for third, fourth, and fifth is 29 students. As of the September 30th enrollment, we went back to September 30th because that's the verified enrollment numbers provided to the state and provided in its entirety back to the board. We had 14 kindergartens that were above the cap, we had 10 first grades that were above the cap, we had 16 second grades that were above the cap, and we had one fourth grade above the cap. Now, keep in mind that that cap at 29, when a person walks in and sees 29 third graders or 28, 29, or 28 third graders, that looks like a pretty full class. We have a total of 41 student, 41 classes over cap as of the September 30th enrollment. Kids do continue to enter our school system after September 30th. At the secondary level, we just used, there really isn't a cap, we don't want our classes going over 30, but they can. Esperanza has 40 classes that are above 30. Leonardtown Middle has 43 classes that are above 30. Margaret Brent has 48 classes that are above 30. Spring Ridge only has one class above 30. Chopticon has 16 classes above 30. Great Mills has 10 classes above 30, and Leonardtown High School has 51 classes above 30. So at the secondary level, there are 209 classes that are running with more than 30 kids in them. Couple of questions were raised about special ed programs. At the elementary school, we have special ed, dedicated special education programs, sale classes, lap classes, and compass classes. Those classes can have between seven and 10 students in a class, depending upon the intensity of the educational need of the student. At middle school, we have five sale classes, three lap classes, and two compass classes. Again, the range is a little higher, seven to 11 students. And at high school, we have seven sale classes, five lap classes, and three compass classes, and that can be from eight to 12 classes, eight to 12 students in a class. So when we aggregate all of that together, you end up with a lower overall class size average.
Excuse me, could you explain to the citizens what those acronyms are? Because they may not know what sale, lap, or compass is.
So the sale program is basically your contained special ed education program for lower ability students. The lap program is the learning adjustment program, that's for students who are designated as emotionally disturbed, who have to have a very close and appropriate program. And the compass program takes care of a whole host of students, but many students who are on the autism spectrum and have specific disabilities that, that require us to have an alternative educational setting. Also included in the budget is the Chesapeake Public Charter School expansion and staffing for 2018. We'll all remember that on November 9th, we went back and forth, had a great conversation, had had work sessions at the beginning of the year, talking about the fact that the Chesapeake Public Charter School is expanding, it is going up to 420 students. It will be adding a kindergarten class, and it'll be adding a second-grade class, and it'll be adding then students each year. So that requires then them to increase their FTE count for a kindergarten teacher, a kindergarten para, a grade-two teacher, and then ultimately a Spanish teacher who will serve all of the children's, all the children, K through 8. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Tammy McCourt, because there is some additional information that's come forward from the state since the last time we met, specifically about our allocation. Ms. McCourt.
So when we originally presented the superintendent's budget, a total of $210.3 million, and this was based on internal conservative projections based on our increased enrollment for state aid. Additional information has come forward from MSDE with a projection to increase state aid above what was originally presented in the superintendent's budget of $1.7 million. So that will bring our adjusted revenues to $212 million. We present on the screen where we're recommending that those monies be placed, instructional salaries and wages specifically in substitute salaries. Additionally, we're recommending that the 10-month, two psychologist new positions be increased to 11-month to allow for summer coverage for IEPs. That is $1,027,960. Under Personnel Services, we're recommending a $19,021, and this is for an inter-agency liaison position that's predominantly supporting L and B and the inter-agency causes between the school system and social services. And it's predominantly grant-funded, however, there is a portion that is locally funded as well. Under Student Transportation, $27,852, and this is for the bus insurance, we have now received MAE insurance numbers. A decrease for property insurance of $30,281 under operation of plant, and an increase in fixed charges of $709,865. These monies will be going towards health insurance, workers' comp, and then general liability insurance as well. So the overall expenditure changes of $1.7 million. So the big picture, our 2017 budget was $207.9 million, and the recommended budget now is $212 million. The local funding request remains stable exactly as we originally presented, at $1.3 million increase or a 1.2% increase. The state funding increases by $3.9 million, or an overall increase in that line of 3.8 million, 3.8%, and nominal increase in the federal impact data, $355,000. So an overall revenue increase of $4.1 million or a 2% increase over the '17 adopted budget. This represents the expenditures by category, and as you can see, the primary areas are within the instructional salaries and wages, representing the negotiated step increases in addition to the new positions that were previously presented. The decrease of $2.9 million under the textbooks and instructional supplies was as a result of the one-time funding in FY '17 for the computer software and the science textbooks. Increases under student transportation are predominantly for the bus contractors and one new bus. Operation of plant is for the vehicle replacement and classroom furnitures. And then $1.6 million under fixed charges for healthcare, pension, and social security costs associated with the new positions. So that concludes the presentation. We will. We welcome any public comments, and of course, you are scheduled to take action on the budget at your next meeting.
Thank you.
Do you have the list?
Okay. Go ahead.
Christine Allred.
Right up here.
My name is Christine Allred, and I'm a resident in California, Maryland. I'd like to speak to three issues. My first is a suggestion to consider virtual school days in the event of snow, hurricane, or other closures. Other states may call them things like calamity days or e-learning days. These days are where students receive assignments from their teachers via the Home Access Center or through email to work at home on assignments which would equal the work done in the classroom. Many of the students are already using programs such as Moodle, Fast Math, iXL, MemBeam, Type to Learn, Front Row, et cetera. So these would be, these could be accessed from home to complete lessons. For students without internet access, teachers would be able to provide assignments or packets to take home if inclement weather is forecast. In Ohio, they call them blizzard bags. So it's just a consideration. In the advantages of including these days, including these days in, especially when we face a compressed school schedule for next year, are that there are fewer snow days would need to be scheduled at the end of the year, which, as we're probably all well aware, students are less engaged when the weather is nice, and oftentimes, grades already have to be configured and reported in. So these e-learning days would help classes stay on track for testing such as PARC and the Advanced Placement Tests. And it would also mean teachers would be spending less time having to catch students up who do not come in on school days when the weather was even marginal. So it's just a suggestion. I don't know if it would be possible to include it in this budget, but in future budgets. The second issue I'd like to address is to say thank you for providing environmental and outdoor education to the students of St. Mary's County. I'm a volunteer, and I work part-time at the Elms, but I'm not speaking for the Elms today. But I've seen the excitement that kindergartners have in touching Maryland Diamondback terrapins, first graders getting to hold salamander eggs, third graders spotting birds through compasses or through, sorry, binoculars, fourth graders catching fish and crabs in their nets, and fifth graders canoeing is just amazing. And I'd suggest if you ever would like to come down and participate in any of those opportunities, you'd really catch the fever of their excitement. So I would like to say thank you for funding those, and would like to encourage you to continue supporting and funding the Elms programs. Just one last thing, I was very excited to see that there were additional para educators proposed in the budget because having also been a substitute teacher, seeing kindergarten and other classes, the need for additional hands in the classroom is, would be greatly appreciated by those of us who are parents as well as who work occasionally in schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. All right. And with that, we will close the public hearing. So another opportunity tonight at six o'clock, same place.
Same exact time.
Okay. Let's see. Any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay. All right. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Can I make a comment, please?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess. One of the things on here is the estimated annual spending changes, which I usually have Ms. Mailey pull this stuff off and do a presentation. I wanted to thank her for going through and referring back to when we did approve certain items in the past and that she's just continuing on with them. It makes it a lot easier because I was able to go back and see where we've done this. So thank you, Ms. Mailey, for providing that information.
All right. Thank you. All right. High School Program of Studies. Ms. Montgomery.
Good morning. So you get me today because Lisa Bachner is at a conference in Florida for Unified Performance Matters. So I'm doing the third reading of the Program of Studies with the proposed revisions. As you know, January 11th was the first reading, and January 24th was the first public hearing, and today, February 8th, is the second reading and hopefully for the approval. So I'm just going to quickly walk you through the information and what you've seen and you've heard in detail from Ms. Bachner. So we have new courses, six proposed courses in career and technology education, two proposed additions in English, one proposed course added to fine arts, two proposed courses for social studies, one proposed course for science, two proposed courses in GIS and STEM, and one proposed course for PE help. Prerequisite changes in science, there were 20 proposed changes, 17 proposed changes in social studies, 28 proposed changes in career and technology education, and one proposed change in English. Deletions, career and technology education had six proposed deletions, and science had one proposed deletion. Title and description changes, CTE had nine proposed changes, English had 13 proposed changes, math had one proposed change, science had 22 proposed changes, and social studies had 11 proposed changes. Credit and change revisions, fine arts, one proposed change revision, and career and technology education had six proposed changes or revisions. So other changes that have been proposed in the following content areas, English Science, GIS, STEM, and career and technology education, and those were just making, if we had charts with information about a course and the number of credits and due to the changes in the descriptions, that we'd have to change charts on other pages in the Program of Studies. So the recommendation today is that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented.
Mrs. Wade, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Mr. Davis.
The only question I have is, a lot of the students that are coming in, maybe not in this county, but are students that were English as a second language. So my question is, has there been provisions made for any increasing requirements for students that were English as their second language?
Well, if ESOL students can still receive services and can take any one of these courses. So we do have a program, and actually, we have an additional ESOL position added to our budget this year to address the needs of increase in these numbers. So they can take any one of those courses, though, and we, you know, do what we need to do to make accommodations for them.
I have any questions? Thank you. Mr. Washington?
No questions. Thank you.
Mrs. Allen?
No questions.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion to, for this recommended action item?
I move that the Board of Education approve the High School Program of Studies revisions for 2017, 2018 as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery, and thank you to all who do all of that work. And it's my understanding, Mrs. Bachner wishes to continue the Program of Studies meetings, and she'll continue that work. Usually, we conclude at this point, and she's going to continue just so that we don't fall behind as so many other things seem to be changing in the expectations of student learning in the state of Maryland.
Yes, they are. They're going to continue their work, and I believe Ms. Bachner talked to you last time that she's going to provide a monthly update, communication update as to the progress and the things that the committee is working on. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr.?
Are you up here, Dr. Morris?
Dr. Morris.
Yep.
Have to approve the post-Labor Day start date for the Chesapeake Public Charter School.
Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. So we're going to take this in two parts. The first is to request your approval to submit a waiver request to the Maryland State Board of Education for the post-Labor Day start. As I shared last time, with the Governor's Executive Order, the school year calendar is to begin after Labor Day and conclude after June 15th. However, there are some options for waivers. One of those, as you can see in this piece, one of the justifications would be for a charter school's unique calendar, unique program. So therefore, first, before we present the other calendars, we're asking for your approval to submit the request for a waiver from the Maryland State Board of Education for the Chesapeake Public Charter School calendar.
Any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Dave?
No.
Anyone down here, does it?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay. And with that, may I have a motion for this action item?
I move that the Board of Education approve the request for a waiver from the Maryland State, Maryland State Board of Education for the Chesapeake Public Charter School to begin the school year prior to Labor Day as aligned with their charter.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And now, Dr. Morris, you can go right into the 2017-18 operating calendar.
Very good. All right. And I'm going to move through this rather quickly. The, there it goes. As we presented last time, we had a great deal of input from our constituents and our stakeholders in this process, talking about starting with a focus group, holding some town hall meetings, survey, the Google site. And I did just check before I walked up here, and we've had over 2,400 hits to the website for the calendar. So there has been a lot of action and a lot of people interested in this. We had the Calendar Committee meet several times, and the board presentation last time at the January 24th public hearing, we did have one person who spoke and really asked some questions about providing support for students throughout the summer. And so we'll have a future board presentation about all of the summer activities for our students to share with you and the public. As we shared the last time, the required number of days for students is 180, with required hours is 1,080 for elementary and middle, and then 1,170. Our calendar does meet these, even, it actually exceeds it by quite a number of hours, so we have time if we have early dismissals or inclement weather hour delays. We have, again, the requirement that we begin after Labor Day and conclude by June 15th, along with the additional days required by law to be closed. And so when we begin July, our fiscal year starts with holidays and the 11-month reporting for the Chesapeake Public Charter School on the 31st of July. When we look at this month in August, the last time we presented, you shared some questions about when we have open houses. So we went back to groups and sought consensus on that, and the open houses would then be moved to Thursday, allowing some flexibility for some schools if they have to avoid conflict with our feeder patterns. So there will be, that change is reflected from the last board meeting. Again, as we go into September, schools would then open for the public schools on the 5th of September. The Chesapeake Public Charter School's first day, as I go back to August, would be August 9th. Okay? Again, there were no changes since then from the calendar presented last time, with the professional day again falling on September 22nd, so no school for students. Into October, again, we have no changes to this as was presented last time. November, again, no changes from the last time. December, moving along with winter break beginning the 22nd for the public schools, the Chesapeake Public Charter School beginning on the 20th. Moving into January, no changes since the last presentation. February, again, no changes since the last presentation. March, no changes. And moving along, actually, the only addition we have is when we run into June, we ask, you ask for clarification about when the last day of school would be if no snow days were used. So we are providing a footnote here and including that in the printed calendar, and also putting a notation that the primary election day is actually June 26th of 2018. There are no school, there's no school in session. Typically, that ends up a day that we have to close schools. There is no school in session for that day. So with that, we're seeking your approval for the school year calendar for the St. Mary's County Public Schools and the Chesapeake Public Charter School.
Mrs. Wade, any questions?
No questions, but just a comment. Thank you for breaking it down like that. It makes it very easy to read, so thank you.
No comment.
Thank you very much for going back on the, on the open house day. So, very much appreciated. Mrs. Washington?
Thank you very much for having feedback from many of the stakeholders, over 2,000 feedbacks. And thank you for, this is a tough committee, and it's a lot of things you have to balance. Thank you very much for all your hard work and dedication and everyone who helped in process.
I echo the thanks on making the flexibility for the open houses available. And to an earlier point, the state law requires that we have in-seat time. They do not allow us to do virtual. There has been some discussion in Washington County that Washington County has made a request that they alone be allowed to do virtual school, and they have made, they say, internet available to every one of their students in their homes supposedly, along with devices, to make that possible. And so it is a conversation that continues to come up, but at the present time, we're bound by state law. So that does have an impact. And then our ability to get a waiver with respect to snow days, should we have more than five snow days, is contingent, again, by law, on us having five snow days built into the calendar. And I have also made my frustration known over the years, over the fact that tacking them on to the end of the school year is not the ideal situation, and we're further constrained now based on what we're attempting to do with the calendar with respect to when we start and when we end. So it's not ideal, but it is, it is what we do going forward, so. But always appreciate feedback, always. So thanks very much, and I appreciate that you were able to maintain the Columbus Day holidays so that there could be parent conferences. I find great value in that. And also appreciate that we were able to keep Veterans Day and Fair Day. I think those are two very specific to this community, very important. And I've had school board members across the state ask us how we've been able to accomplish the calendar that we have and maintain the days that we have. So, thank you.
And as you've mentioned, it took a really, a great deal of effort by a lot of people who put this together. So I thank the committee, I thank Ms. Montgomery for helping to lead the committee, and all the people who provided input.
And I like the process that was used this time. I think it is a much improved process.
Which we shall use going forward because while this year it worked out, next year becomes more challenging, and if everything remains the same, the third year is, I'm not sure how we can do it. So we'll be, we'll be talking about a lot, talking about calendar quite a great deal.
Yes, we will.
All right. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion for this recommended action item?
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2017 to 2018 St. Mary's County Public Schools and Chesapeake Public Charter School calendars as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
It wasn't on long enough for us to get a flavor of exactly what the ringtone was.
Yeah, sounded like a Hawaii Five-O to me, but...
Thank you very much.
I can't do Name That Tune in three notes, so.
All right. Let's see. Athletic and physical education supplies and team uniforms, Ms. Maile and Dr. Rupert.
Good morning. Ms. Maile is just coming back from being out sick, so we'll try and keep this as short as possible because she, she has a voice that is about to disappear. So I'm going to pass this over to her, and she's going to talk through the fiscal side of things.
Good morning. Sorry, it's like Ms. Allen, I caught the Mowgli flu that went around. And, but I am here to talk to you today about the Department of Curriculum Instruction's need to use the Athletic and Physical Education Supplies and Team Uniform Contract. The contract was awarded through the National Intergovernmental... The contract was awarded through the National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance, National IPA. The contract term started on October first of last year, and it runs through September thirty, two thousand and nineteen, and can be renewed for two additional one-year terms. The BSN Sports Company and US Games Company partnered and to become the nation's largest distributor of athletic and PE equipment to provide supplies for this contract. As Saint Mary's County Public Schools has been registered with National IPA since April of two thousand and fifteen, we've been using a similar contract with BSN and US Games through a different purchasing co-op, which was US Communities. We used that contract from the time that it was valid in two thousand and nine until it just ended in September of two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, sorry. We estimate that we, that we won't exceed a hundred thousand dollars in a fiscal year throughout the duration of the contract, which can be renewed through September thirty, two thousand and twenty-one. I went back and looked at some of our previous spending in, in the past five fiscal years, and although we normally spend about forty or fifty thousand, there has been occasions when it has gotten up to a hundred thousand, and that's usually when a lot of sports uniforms are being purchased, which runs in cycles, so it's not going to happen every fiscal year. The contract is based on a percentage off, a minimum percentage discount off of the different product categories, and that's just the minimum discount of twenty-two percent off fiscal education, eighteen percent off athletic equipment, and fifteen percent off fitness products. Most of the items have free shipping, but there are some exclusions for heavy-duty equipment and drop ship deliveries. We provided a couple sample quotes in the presentation. These are three orders that we currently have pending. Though, we've already processed twenty-two thousand dollars worth of orders to this vendor this fiscal year, but these three requisitions would have pushed us over to twenty-five, and that's why we're here asking approval now. But you could, as you could see, the items are described in detail. You see the cost per unit, and then they show you the discounted price and what we actually end up paying and what the savings are. And here, this is one for Great Mills High School. You could see on some of the examples that even though the minimum discounts were twenty-two and eighteen percent, we received up to thirty-some percent off of some of the items. So again, those are just the minimum discounts. Procurement method, the board policy and regulations encourage the use of contracts established by other agencies. Piggybacking is permitted through Maryland state law as stated in the Annotated Code of Maryland. And we recommend that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented. Do you have any questions?
So I have a question on, is this spending, it's for all the schools, so no matter what's PE equipment is needed, so let's say if it's Hollywood Elementary School, and they need, let's say, a new basketball hoop or something like that, this is for all the schools, not just our high schools?
Yeah, my, my understanding is it is business done with this particular vendor, so when you look at, you know, physical education supplies, recess supplies, intramural supplies at middle school, it's a scholastic, athletic supplies at high school, it's, it's across the system for multiple programs.
Yeah, and, and they, this is the primary contract that we recommend that people use, but people do buy from other athletic and PE companies as well.
Now, do you need to have a certain amount, let's say, let's say seven thousand dollars worth of equipment to get a percentage off?
No, no. It's, it's across the board on the catalog, on the catalog items, the minimum discount is applicable to that, but there are deeper discounts to be had on some items. But the, there is no minimum purchase requirement to obtain the discount.
Now, do, let's say, I, I'm just saying like the elementary schools, and do they need to put together their wish list before the start of the year so that you can order everything as, I guess, like as a bundle or a group, or especially if it, it's something in the category of not getting the, the free shipping?
Each school orders their, their equipment on their own.
It's usually done on a, on a as-needed, needed basis. We base purchases on current inventories, we ask the schools that they update that inventory annually, and that, to the beginning of the next school year, they will look at their needs and submit those to me, and then we look across the system to see, you know, to prioritize those and to see what funds are available.
Most spending does take place during the summer months, as they go through their inventory and, and look to see what they need and when they have their new funds allocated. So the majority of the ordering does take place during July and August.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to embellish a little bit on Mrs. Weaver's comments, economies of scale. It would seem to me if you order a, a lot of materials, you're going to get a better rate. Is that, I didn't hear that. Is that, is that an opportunity for you?
It, it could be. Right now, the, the discounts are set at the minimum, but if you're ordering large quantities, then there could be a potential to, for the vendor to give you a greater discount. And we've seen them do that just on regular orders, giving us greater discounts. So if the school system were to combine everything at once and send them all in, you know, it could be that they could get more of a, a discount. It's, it's something that we could look at for next year when we get our new funds.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. Thank you very much for the presentation. I appreciate, I appreciate the price quotes, so.
Great job. I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thanks. Mrs. Allen?
Thank you very much.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion for this recommended action item?
I move that the Board of Education approve the use of the National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance Contract Number R-160701 with BSN Sports LLC to purchase athletic and physical education products and supplies on an as-needed basis as funding permits throughout the duration of the contract.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Send her home. Mrs. Weaver? All right, Mrs. Fallon.
Good morning. Just making sure I can get the technology going here. Good morning, Mrs. Bailey, Mrs. Washington, board members, Mr. Smith. And, board members, you may recall that in August, you approved a contract for us to purchase pathways to be used in all elementary, middle, and high schools for certain staff members because it is license-based. And in September, we had training for special education teachers and instructional resource teachers, and sixty staff members who have been accessing materials and working with grade-level teams and such in the interim. And there has been such a positive response from staff members that I wanted to come back with you and share some of that information about this particular web-based resource. So the, and, and you know this, but not everybody does, this is a companion to Goalbook, which special education uses to access standards-based IEP goals. And so it's a companion product. However, Pathways is designed for all students, so it's designed to support students who might be struggling, and it is designed to challenge students who might be exceeding standards. And it is, it has been developed by experienced educators, classroom teachers, using research-based strategies, and the resources are model resources, and in using this, teachers can design multiple pathways so that all students can succeed. So what does it consist of? It actually consisted, consists of, in terms of content, reading, writing, and math, I left writing off there, for kindergarten through grade twelve. So if you just kind of think about that for a moment, and all that must entail, it's a lot. So there are instructional tasks, it includes a wide variety of reading passages at every grade level, a wide variety of assessment items, application, mini projects, and just all kinds of printable resources that teachers have easy access to based on standards that they are teaching. However, there's more. Not only is there content, there are strategies for behavior and social-emotional learning, which is just really a wonderful resource for our staff. So the, the strategies are explained in detail, there are ready-to-use resources that teachers can immediately apply in their classroom, there are tips for how to implement, and lots and lots of examples are given to support teachers in meeting the behavior and social-emotional needs of their students. So at the heart of using Pathways is differentiation so that the needs of all students can be met through collaboration. So we're excited about the product because not only does it provide differentiation, it provides a, a product for special educators to use with general educators to solidify their co-teaching collaborative partnership with general education. So, let me, we're not going there yet. Get out of this. Let me get, thank you. Can you also help me get out of this? Yeah. No, I want to minimize it. That's exactly where I want to be.
Okay.
Okay. So, this is how clever and useful this resource is. Let's say that I want to browse for reading strategies, and I want reading strategies for comprehension. All of these products or supports come up, and I can take a look at what I might want. There are implementation tips, there is text available, I can look for additional modification if I need it. For teachers whose time is precious and who are struggling to meet the needs of all of the students in their classroom, to have a resource like this where they can immediately find research-based resources to apply in their classroom is really quite powerful. But let's say I want a strategy for behavior, and I am looking for, I want to support a student in responsible decision-making. Again, I can find all kinds of resources, and I can look for the kind that my student might need. Maybe my student needs modeling behaviors, or maybe I need to be providing pre-corrections to my student before the misbehavior occurs. There are many ways that I can learn to support the behavior and social-emotional learning of my student at literally the click of a fingertip.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Uh huh.
On the first example that you gave where it was for comprehension and it said to provide a parallel text, you know, do they, is there somewhere where you can go to get examples of what it would be also? So rather than, I mean, you know, just that simple sentence, then is there another aspect of that, of Pathways that you can say, okay, if your class, your class can read this book, this is the supplemental text?
There are many, many parallel passages that are provided. Absolutely. So we wanted to provide teachers who've been using Pathways an opportunity to share their excitement about the product, and Mr. Reed and Ms. Saxina are a co-teaching team for algebra at Chopticon High School, and...
So we use Pathways to help differentiate in our classroom, which is really what it's created for with the different levels. The part that I think we really like is that eventually our students have to pass the part for Algebra One, and it helps with that differentiation and building that confidence.
When I, when I think of rigor in, in our classroom, I think of three different things that was in the book by Barbara Blackburn, and it's setting, setting standard, achieving and validating the student's achievement, and then what you expect from, from the students.
Supporting that achievement.
Supporting, supporting that achievement. And I think we do a great job at setting the standard in our classroom, and then I think the other two areas of rigor where Pathways really comes in to help us support that rigor that is set in our standard.
And then, we have two, a second-grade co-teaching team at Carver who are speaking to collaboration.
We were introduced to Pathways this year, and we've been co-teaching since last year. A lot of times, we would sit down and we would think, okay, here's the unit, here's the unit we're looking at, and here's the first lesson we're going to teach, and this is what we want them to know at the end. But a lot of times, we got lost in the middle of how we're going to get from this beginning understanding to this overall strong command, as we would call it now, of the standard. And Pathways has helped us break it up, and like I referenced before, the DAX of Knowledge talks about our most basic understanding of the standard, our general understanding and how we get to an even deeper understanding. And we have now been able to break it up and plan a whole unit of study based on one to two standards, instead of trying to hit it all in one to two lessons. And it's helped us take those ideas and knowing those students that struggle and plan activities and ways of instruction for them that's going to still allow them to function within this general setting.
With each subject, math, writing, and reading, you can unpack each and every standard that's within each subject. So for the math activity that we're just planning, we're able to look back at what we're expecting of them to come in with from first grade and take that and try to get them to where we need them to be on second grade level, and for the students that need more challenge, we can see where they need to be, and we can have extension activities based on where we want them to be by the time they start third grade.
They also provide you with, they have materials for your use, so they give you these great suggestions, okay, try pre-teaching and using maybe a graphic organizer. You don't have to think, okay, how can I find a graphic organizer? You can click right on the UDL they have, and it's going to pop it right up for you. It'll take you right to that. So it gives you a definition of the UDL, which is the universal design of learning, right? And it'll pop it up, give you the definition, then give you multiple resources. Our teaching place value next week, it has three D place value blocks that I can cut out and laminate for students to have in their math toolboxes and all different types of things like that. So it makes it easier, and it honestly motivates us to be better teachers because we know the students that struggle, and instead of thinking to ourselves, oh my goodness, how are we going to teach this lesson, how are we going to get this to them? It gives us a straightaway way to do it. Now, you can... get this to them, it gives us a straightaway way to do it, now, you can modify it to what works for your students, but the ideas that it has are just great.
To the point that Ms. Farinella was making, the, when the teachers download materials, they're in Word documents, so they can use that as a seed and then build on it and change it, or they can use it as it was created by Pathways, so it offers a lot of flexibility in terms of how those lessons are implemented and how assessments are administered, so we do have an additional training lined up, we're very excited about that, and schools wanted to send, many schools wanted to send more people than we can really accommodate, but that's, you know, it's nice, folks want to come, and then we are hoping to increase our licenses for next year, the company is working with us, we have a discount because we were early, early on board, and they're going to maintain that discount for us for next year, so we're excited about that. So, do you have any questions?
Well, I wanted to tell you, this, it is a great tool because like even here I have pulled up about the math, and it just says, you know, it gives, like they said, the definition, the examples, but then they also have here where you can print out these numbers, and it tells you what the expected response should be and how to go about working with the student, the other thing too is, is I also pulled up the concept map, and there's one, two, three, there's four, four different graphic organizers on here in concept maps, and it just says download, so like when I clicked on it, it just pulled that up, and they've got it right there, instead of having to hunt through places or, you know, go to the bookstore and try to find it and then try to, you know, copy it, so I mean, I think this is great. My questions are updates, will this company provide like updates as, you know, like say if maybe they come up with a new idea or something like that, that they will provide updates while we have this license?
It just happens live, so the, it is dynamic, it changes, and, and I'm glad you asked, because Mrs. Loker, in reviewing, found an error in math, we contacted the company and they addressed it within a week, so it's very fluid and dynamic.
And how many teachers are currently on this program?
We have three hundred licenses that were, are available to us this year.
And are all three hundred currently being used?
About two hundred and ninety are currently being used.
Okay.
And we have, we've been reducing some categories and increasing others, which is why we're not right up to three hundred, for example, counselors, because of Goalbook and IEP goals had access, we can't separate the licenses, it's one license for both products, so we have reduced counselor access so that we could increase teacher access for Pathways, and then counselors can work with IEP case managers to have access when they need access to Goalbook.
And then, how many are you looking at or anticipating licenses in the future?
Right now, we, Gen Ed is hoping to provide some funds, and that would be for a hundred and twen, a hundred and twenty licenses. What we would like to do, and I think this is really what you're asking about, what we would like to do is have access for teacher teams, so in each elementary school, we would like to have access for each team, K to five, they, you know, the, the teams get together to team plan on a regular basis, so it's not necessary for every single member of the team to have a license because they can, you know, using a smart board or whatever, they can plan together, and, and the resources can be shared.
Okay, I just think this is a valuable tool.
Absolutely.
And a big time saver and great ideas for the, the staff, so.
And I only address licenses in elementary, in middle school, we would be looking at the content, teaching teams, special educator, general educator, and then high school co-teaching teams like you saw with Mr. Reed and Ms. Saxena, so we are looking K to twelve as we're increasing licenses for next year.
But right now, the high school teams are limited with it?
It's spotty.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Gaines?
I want to compliment you on the work that you've done, I was impressed with the fact that you're integrating the teachers, you know, the end-users in the design of the program, I have been involved, like I'm sure everybody, on programs where the end-users never consolidate until you've designed the product, or a product, and then, then you find that you have problems, so I think that's great, you, they're the end-users, and they're, they're obviously involved in, in the design of the program. Outcomes, is there any tool or any measurements that, quantitative measurements that, in terms of improvements with the, the pathways that you've designed?
Good question, so moving forward, we will have the opportunity to compare scores for kids who were in classrooms using Pathways this year with previous years where Pathways wasn't being used, so our purpose is to increase rigor specifically for students with disabilities, so their scores on our local assessments as well as PARC over time, where anticipating will increase as a result of utilizing both the training and the product, the training is a very important piece of the product.
Thank you.
I, I echo the sentiment so far, I think as, as the elementary school students are hit with more and more information at a rapid pace, you know, especially in that K through third grade range, I think having, and struggles that some of the teachers have in meeting the needs of all of the students in the classroom, I think this, this method and this tool that helps them meet those needs without spending hours, you know, on Google or on various educational websites trying to find a fit, I think is, is phenomenal, so, thank you very much for finding it, thank you for negotiating the contract, and I, I fully support the, you know, the additional seat licenses, you know, for, for the students, because like I said, you know, our, our elementary school students are moving through information at an incredibly rapid pace even compared to three years ago, so it, it's phenomenal what they, what they cover in a short amount of time, and I can only imagine what the struggle is for a student who does have a disability and just can't move at that, at that rapid pace, so.
You bring up a good point, Mrs. Bailey, in that this provides us with a resource, a research-based, hopefully to become over time, evidence-based product that was developed by teachers and has been vetted, as opposed to Pinterest.
Right.
And, and I think we want our staff to have access to high-quality instructional materials that they can have confidence in and which are easily accessible.
Right.
No product is perfect, and, and you know, I'm not here to tell you that this is the end-all, be-all, but it is a very strong product that our teachers are finding to be very helpful.
Right, well, I mean, I like the fact that it's proven and that it's vetted, I mean, you know, nothing against Pinterest, I'm not, I'm not a Pinterest person, I've not had great success with them, so I can't say that I fully support them, but I like this a lot better, so, thank you. Mrs. Washington?
Thank you, I think this is a phenomenal resource for remediation and rigor, it's easy for the teachers to use, and it saves them time, energy and money, and the teachers support it, and I saw an example of this just last week when I visited a elementary school, I read a story to the students, and I asked them questions, the teacher gave me a cup with popsicle sticks in it, and at the bottom, it had the students' names, so I thought, oh, that's really cute, but, so I, so when I called on the students, she said, just pull out a stick, so I pulled out a stick, read off the student's name, and she said, this was a, a way to engage all students, the ones who raised their hands and the ones who do not raise their hands, so every student would get an opportunity to be called on, so as I was studying for my board meeting today, I clicked on reading and engagement, and there were several, and I just clicked on equity sticks because it reminded me of the popsicle sticks that were in this cup, and it explained why the teacher does what she do, so I thought that was great, so I see it working already in schools, thank you so much, it is a great program, and I will see it probably in other classes as I visit them the way they do business in their classroom, so, thank you very much.
I, all I can do is echo what's been said, at the fact that it's a program with embedded resources that are specific to the subject, to the level, and to the, the need is wonderful, it, it allows teachers to work smarter, not harder, and I'm all for that, so, thank you.
Right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Tammy McHort. Before you is the FY seventeen revenue report as of the end of January, of the $210 million budget, we have collected revenues of $148.9 million or seventy point eight percent of the budget, we've collected our third quarter payment from the county, and that represents seventy-five percent of the budget for the revenues for the county, and then we've collected sixty-six point six seven percent from the state, so right on target. On the expenditure side, we have encumbrances outstanding of $93.1 million substantially related to salaries, total year-to-date encumbrances and expenditures of $195 million, and an available balance of $15.3 million, there are no concerns currently on the expenditure side, I would like to highlight one positive, and that is that our group health insurance claims are below the expected amount currently, we're in a very good positive posture, hopefully that trend continues for the remainder of the fiscal year. Are there any questions?
I don't know, people are getting sick here at Mowgli Street, so.
But Kathy's not on your insurance, you're clear.
Oh, all right, that's fine.
Mrs. Weaver, do you have anything?
No questions.
Mr. Davis?
No questions.
I don't have anything, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, no questions.
No questions, and I did thank you for sharing.
Yeah, we did give it to you, so, it is our fault, we apologize.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I will remind everyone once again about the public hearing on the superintendent's recommended budget for 2018 tonight at six o'clock, our next board meeting is Wednesday, February 22nd at 6:00 PM, and we are adjourned.